Good evening and welcome to the Town in Acton Selectments Meeting for January 12th, 2016. First item on the agenda, a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the divide of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Seconded. All in favor? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded. All in favor? Department head, committee chair, updates? Okay, it's up to you.
So, I hope that it's okay. I did the agenda a little bit differently this week and I think that it would be easier so the board can really have more input on where some of the old business things start. So, anything that I have an actual update on, I'm gonna put in under me, but if it's something that's just continued over from last week because we haven't completed it yet, we'll put it under old business and the chair can kinda keep it moving along. First thing I have is the speed limit updates. Last week, Deputy Shaw and I met with Tim Susi from Maine DOT. He actually came down to Acton and the three of us had a meeting. Based on the December 11th 14 letter that you guys sent him listing out all of the streets, he went through all of them and with Deputy Shaw, they agreed on speed limits and they discussed the placement of the signs. And I guess I really wanna mention that because although we will ask our road commissioners to put them in, these guys have actually picked the spots. We wanna make sure that the board is okay with taking their recommendation, not to say the road commissioners are gonna be any different.
I think we had to, that's why we had to call them in. The state tells us where to put them and what the speed limit is and then the town puts the signs up.
Puts the signs up, okay.
We don't get to make that determination, so.
Okay, so we have probably close to 25, maybe even 30 signs to purchase. There are a couple of areas that he wants, you know, particular arrows going for either sharp bends or there's a particular area that I don't recall what road it's on, but he felt like he was just about gonna land in the water, so he wanted a left-hand one. So, we have it all spelled out.
You're talking like curb signs?
Curb signs, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, with your approval, we'll order these. Now, in the past, they've come out of the road commissioners' individual budgets for their roads. We have a miscellaneous municipal management fund that because the road commissioners didn't request these, I asked Michelle to find a different account, would you be okay, that we can legally take them out of and go ahead and get them ordered and...
Motion to buy the signs?
I move we buy the signs.
Seconded. All in favor?
Okay. Hopefully, I don't know what the best weather to install those signs, but I'll talk to both of the guys and see what they can do to help us get those installed once they're in. Next thing, a kind of follow-up from last week, some things that you asked me for. Set a budget date. I did talk to Michelle and she is good with the third Friday in February, and I apologize, I had to look at my calendar. So, we'd be looking at the 19th as the deadline for budgets and with your approval, she'll send out a memo indicating that. In regards to the salaries that you asked me to look into?
Yeah.
Some information from her, so first of all regarding the fire department, estimating what the fire department needs in the salary is pretty tough right now. There's no base point and there hasn't been clear direction set as to how shifts will be covered by full-time personnel or per diem personnel or what the fire chief is going to make. Basically, more information is needed before she can put that forward. And her thought, you know, as we were kinda talking about it, she pointed out a good point that, you know, if we don't have these positions filled yet, let's just say it's February or March before we get them filled, quite honestly, they're not gonna be looking at increases in June.
Right.
So, you know what I mean? So, that doesn't have to affect this year's budget because, you know, most people don't get an increase after three or four months on the job, so.
Well, I was thinking more along the lines too that this past year, because we didn't know if they were gonna pass the budget for the new ambulance, that we put in a fire department budget and a fire ambulance budget.
Right.
So, there's an extra amount of money.
She said there would certainly be a good amount of money being rolled over into undesignated funds from the fire department.
Okay.
But she's still looking for information as far as what the fire chief, you know, what the salary's gonna be. I know we had talked about, you know, the stipend that the prior chief got along with what they budgeted, so depending on qualifications, you'll be right around that $50,000 mark plus benefits.
Yeah, we'll negotiate with whoever we decide to hire after they go through the interview process.
Okay, so then in regards to the other positions, so increasing all salaries by 3% with the exception of the fire department is about $10,000 increase for approximately 15 positions. However, we're not buying an $8,000 boat this year, so really it's only about $2,000. The increase does not even affect the tax rate by a quarter of a cent, about a half a cent even if we didn't factor in the boat.
Okay.
So, in this memo that we're putting out, what is it that we're telling the department heads?
Well, we gave them 3% last year. Do you wanna do the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright. Tell them to budget in the same. I know the school's going through negotiations now. I don't know what the teachers are gonna get. They can't even start their budget because they haven't finished the contracts for the next three years yet, so.
Okay. And then the other thing I just wanted to, the capital improvement piece, just to kinda follow up a little bit as we are starting to work on the warrant. Michelle did speak to Ken Paul who estimated the remainder of the siding on this, on the whole building at about $40,000.
Okay.
So, that's one if you decide, you don't need to decide tonight. Roof, I did speak to Hall Brothers today and they're going out and take a look at it.
For the fire department?
For the fire department. So, they're gonna actually give you a quote on both of them. I know that the new building, I don't think, needs it, but they'll keep them separated. So, he said we'd have that by next week.
Okay.
And then the walkway, I did play phone tag with Joe Laterno again yesterday, but he assured me in my message that I would hear from him before the end of the week. So, those will be individual warrant articles, is that how you wanted it?
Yeah, and I'm hoping that there's some money in the fund, capital improvement fund, to go towards either the siding or the front walkway or something like that. And I was thinking we should also increase our maintenance budget by $5,000 because of all the expenses that we've had that have come up with parts of the, other parts of the building that we hadn't planned on, you know, library, all the things that come up, so.
We have what, 15?
It's 25, but that includes the...
All the contracts, no shoveling, the grass.
Cleaner and all that, so we end up usually with like $15,000 to maintain the whole building, so that would give us 20, so you asked Michelle to put it...
Probably not a bad idea, yeah.
An additional $5,000, because I know their heater keeps going too and eventually we're gonna have to put those heaters like we did downstairs, so.
The capital improvement account has $40,000 in it.
Okay, so we can take some, we can ask the town to take some from there to do the siding and then we just have to ask for money that go into tax rolls to do the front entrance to the library. Okay, good.
That's all I have.
That's it? Okay. Any, you have anything for us? We're just doing department heads right now.
No, just in regards, there was a question we had about the CIP program. I talked to Peter about that. Three years ago, he came to you and saying, you know, let's look ahead and everything. So, there should be money in a CIP program for the fire department for that roof somewheres unless things fell through the cracks somewheres, so.
Well, Michelle would know where it is, so we can ask her, but...
Because I asked him, he said, no, every year, and that was one of the things he always put in his budget the last three years was knowing that was gonna be coming along, so it can be a little bit easier of us thing when the time comes, so, yeah, definitely look into that.
Yeah, I was just thinking, we're gonna have the town hall completely finished next year and if we get that done, then we've got 20 years before we have to do anything unless something breaks down, so that'd be great.
And we're pushing 16 years over there now, so.
Yeah, and he said the backside gets more sun, so it's starting to fold up and everything?
Yeah.
So, maybe change the backside this year and then wait to 20 years to change the front?
Something there, yeah.
Yeah.
But, yep, no, there should be money in a CIP program somewhere, so.
Okay.
TDL drug testing memo continuation.
So, per your request, I am still looking into different time clocks. I did find a company out of Westbrook, probably one of the only ones in Maine that do very, very eccentric time clocks. They do them for all types of companies. The gentleman salesman is gonna come down on Friday and talk to me about it, but basically I explained to him what I thought we were looking for. I don't know if you wanna elaborate a little more on the conversation you and I had?
Yeah, what I was thinking we should do because of this issue with the CDL drug testing and the time clocks, you know, we're already using time clocks at the transfer station as we put, and now we're gonna have the fire department with all these people working there. We put everybody that's an hourly rate goes on a time clock. All the school employees that are on an hourly rate, all the ed techs and the janitors and all that, they have to punch a time clock every day. And that way, we could have one at the transfer station, one at the fire station, and where was the other one?
Town hall.
One at the town hall. And it would not just be road people, it'll be everybody, the firefighters. And the time clock, I imagine, once we get this up, is the fire station already open 24 hours a day now? Is it manned 24 hours a day?
Probably close, right now for the month of January, probably 90% of the time.
Okay, and when you guys go out to a call, do you lock it all up?
Yes.
You do, okay, so, alright, so it would have to be, they could go there if it was open, but if not, then they could come to the town hall and do it, so.
As, oh, you mean as the road commissioner people?
If you're not out on a call, then anybody could just pull in and use the time clock there.
So, they would, yeah, because everybody would have a, have an ID number.
Yeah, they'll have a card.
So, it doesn't matter where you punch, where somebody would punch in because it's just gonna go to their ID number, so.
Yeah, we're hoping that everybody will have a card and they just slide their card every day and then nobody will have to do timesheets anymore or payroll for Michelle.
Which would be wonderful and would work out good because then we can...
So, it'll clean the whole system up, everybody, she won't have to wait until Tuesday for payroll, she'll have it on Monday morning.
Yeah, everything, you know, follow that right through with a data track program or something and it would be, it's time that we go that way, especially like you were saying with the personnel coming on and the stipends and all that stuff and that would be the people that would affect on the fire department end would be, you know, the stipend personnel and the two full-time people.
Yeah, I think stipends, you may still have to write that down because if they go directly to the fire, they're not gonna have time.
Well, when they work a stipend, they're at the station.
Oh, they don't get paid when they go to the fire?
No, then we also, now, okay.
Per diem.
Well, that's what I mean, your per diem people, they're there, I have two on now, they're per diem people.
Right, but the stipends, we don't do, they don't punch in or anything for that?
So, if right now we would have a call and I had 20 people show up, we have a log report and everybody gets checked off, that's still gonna stay there because that's, we still have to do it the old-fashioned way.
Still, you don't need to change that.
No, we won't change it. The only thing that we'd be changing would be, would be the two full-time people would be punched on a clock and then also your per diem people.
Okay.
So, then we'd be able to track that with everything, so.
So, what do you think? That sound like a good idea? That way, everybody that's an hourly wage earner will have to use a time clock?
Yeah, where are the three locations? Tool shed, or the salt shed, and the town hall and...
Not the salt shed.
No?
Because you said they had to have a...
Wireless.
A wireless connection, so.
It's gonna have a Wi-Fi.
Yeah, so the fire department has one, the transfer station has one, and we have one, so we'd have to put a phone and everything else in there.
Transport station has Wi-Fi? And right now, they're using the old plug-in one.
They're using telephone?
No, the old plug-in time clock that you just stamp down, it just plugs in, but...
They don't have internet access up there?
No, no.
But they have, they have a phone line and everything, so it'd be a lot easier than putting everything in.
Yeah, and there may be something that we can purchase. You may eventually be able, you may be able to put one at the Sand and Salt Building as well. The gentleman's gonna give us some more options come Friday, but I didn't wanna get too far into it unless the whole board was...
Yeah, I definitely think the time clock is about the only way to go, so.
So, I'm gonna meet with him Friday and I'll have more information to present to you on Tuesday. I mean, we're still looking about at a couple of weeks out to, you know, put something like this together and I guess...
In the meantime, I think you should just go ahead with your testing the way we've done it and, you know, as far as when you get somebody that you have to test, then just call them in like we have before.
Knowing that we have no idea if they're on safety sensitive and it...
Yeah, I mean, it's the way it's always been done since we started this drug program, so we'll continue that. We're making a change as soon as we can, but we can't stop the drug testing because you're getting, you're getting people's names, correct?
I am getting people's names.
Yeah, we have to continue it until we can get this in place.
Okay, the, and I spoke to Mr. Attorney Moore today. He called to kind of follow up to see that, where that was going and, you know, the only thing that kinda came up, the concern, is that in the wintertime, let's say for example, you know, the road, let's just say one of the road commissioners were only working, you know, that there aren't, there isn't winter work. I don't know what they do in the winter, but let's say there's no winter work except for the plowing. So, you know, he's gonna punch in when it's plowing and I've got, let's just say I have one of their names, the only time that they're punching in is gonna be when it's snowing because they don't do, you know what I mean? Because what they tell me is that there's not a lot of other work that's being done, you know what I mean, in the wintertime. So, then we're gonna be into the situation that I'm gonna be pulling them when they're out plowing because that's when it's gonna be, so, I mean, you know, weeks could go by if it doesn't snow during the day, that you're sitting on a name because I'm waiting for them, this particular individual to punch in. So, I don't, you know what I mean? I don't know how we're gonna handle that.
Don't really have any other choice right now until we get the time clock.
But no, but I'm saying, once the time clock's in place, what if there's no work other than plowing?
Yeah.
They're gonna have to go when it's snowing. They're gonna get taken off the road to go.
That they will.
You've got 30 days though to do this, right?
I have 30 days, yes, but what I'm saying is that there's no regular winter work.
Yep, and we haven't had any snowstorms yet. Couple of sanding jobs, right?
Right, but I don't, I don't think they wanna be called out when they're sanding either. I mean, they're taking away from, I just...
And actually, that wasn't during the day because it was so warm during the day, that was during the night, so that wouldn't have helped us anyways. Yeah, so, we're just gonna have to keep doing it the way we're doing it until we can get the time clocks in and then if we can't get somebody during a month that they've been called, we'll have to tell them that they have to go and get it done because we have to maintain that. I mean, that's federal law.
Okay.
Fire chief opening?
Just a reminder or update, I guess, the deadline is tomorrow at 4 o'clock. As of now, I have nine applications.
Oh, that's great. Did it get on that website that went out of the state?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Did we get applications from out of state?
Yes.
Wow. Fire rescue consolidation update and committee.
Drew, I can give you a quickie on that. We set up a meeting for this Thursday at 6 o'clock to get the committee together. We have just one, we had two individuals for the seventh position. We had two, it's down to one. One of the individuals has pulled his name due to some health reasons and so it's down to one. We are meeting with that one at 6:30, the committee is, and we'll, hopefully if all goes well, we'll have our seventh member and then we're off and running. The deadline will be past the deadline. We'll have all the paperwork for everyone that submitted. We'll hand that out to the board members and go from there and set up another meeting for the following week, I believe.
So, I should have enough copies made for Thursday, you wanna give them out Thursday night?
I think so, yeah. There's no sense, I don't think, prolonging it. Once we have that seventh member?
Right.
Everybody can take it home as homework and...
Yeah, and I just urge the reminders of the personnel here and, you know, how...
It's all, yeah, it's all personal information, confidential, yeah, sensitive information.
And the other thing is, on that first meeting, if you can get a whole schedule of meetings so that you can do all nine of them to Jennifer so she can call up and make time for them to come in and see you guys.
Definitely, yeah, I was saying, we definitely need to go through her office, your office to get that.
You want me to schedule the interviews?
Yeah, to schedule the interviews. I think that's the best way to do it.
So, if you can give her a schedule of when your meetings are and then she can call them and see who can come on which night, that'd be great and we get all nine of them done as soon as possible.
Yeah, I don't know whether we'll interview all nine. I would think that, I would think out of nine, there must be one or two in there that, you know, we may just look at it and say, it doesn't meet the qualifications. I don't know. Hopefully, they're all good, you know? So, but nine, that's great. It's far more than I had hoped to have, so.
And cons, consolidation, we just have the meeting on the 23rd, right?
26.
26?
26, yes. I did speak to Jennifer Scotto, nothing really, really new there. We're just waiting for, waiting for that date to come and go so that we can proceed. Bill Cantuzzi has given me all of the drafts that he's looking to have signed and wanted our attorney to look at as far as the takeover of everything and how it's spelled out, so we're working on that.
So, they'll sign after the vote and then the paperwork will come to us to sign and then we'll be done?
I believe they'll sign, yes.
Well, that's great. My favorite, abandoned properties.
Attorney, Attorney Lunkowski was in a day or two ago and had me fill out and attest to some true, some documents that they came out of the Town of Acton zoning ordinance because these, these properties that we are calling abandoned, that the code enforcement is trying to essentially get them to clean up, the force is because of the zoning. So, anyways, we attested to some documents. I have here the two land use citations and complaints from the Town of Acton as a plaintiff versus the two defendants and they have been filed in court. So, I'll keep you posted.
Alrighty. Warrant, special projects, we already did that, right? Articles update, we gotta change articles on the warrant?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that, so special projects, that was the January 28th deadline, right?
Yeah.
And, yeah, the articles update, I think I meant to kinda put that twice for the capital improvement, so I just wanted to make sure I knew what you wanted, so I think I'm all set there.
Alright, and we will, after the 26th, we will only have one article for the fire department instead of two this year?
Correct.
Okay. Winter sand, this is about our salt shed not being ready yet? We got it up and ready?
No, I haven't spoken to, well, I spoke to Mr. Winchell today, but that didn't come up, but I did spoke to Ken earlier and he, they haven't had any communications yet, so I didn't know if you had an update or...
Okay, I'll get in touch with Dave and Scott and find out what's going on, especially with this storm coming in this weekend because it doesn't take long to put it back together. And 2013 foreclosure notices, hopefully you're gonna tell me you got a whole bunch of people came in and paid this week.
We are down from 20 to, I believe, 17.
Oh.
And they're still two weeks, so.
Alright, and you guys had a DM meeting? How'd that go?
Yes, it went, went okay. There's a fellow that, I guess he works for the state. He's an English gentleman. At any rate, he came up with a proposal that is gonna be discussed now. Basically, they're talking about removing a section of the spillway here, which is going to stabilize according to them the water levels and so forth. They've gone back out to the four people that responded to the original request for a proposal and they're gonna spend an hour with each one of these four outfits to determine what other problems exist and everything as they go forward. Right now, they don't have any idea of cost or anything. The high price for, for the, what do you call it?
Engineering?
Huh?
Engineering?
Engineering?
Yeah, the, yeah, the...
Was it 30 grand or something?
Yeah, 80 grand.
Eighty?
It was the high one, so there's a lot of, lot of things that have to be discussed and that's all gonna happen on the 12th of February.
Alright, so we should plan on, well, we already have an article in there to put $5,000 a year into the dam anyway, so we don't have to do another article. We can just increase that this year once we know what our share is gonna be, right?
Yeah, we have 17,000 plus in there right now, but that's not gonna be anywhere near enough for a lot of these things.
For our share, yeah, I mean, well, and that's just for the engineering, then we gotta come up with money to help repair it afterwards, right?
Oh, yeah, right, right, right. But right now, they're working on with this Tony, what's his name? I don't know what happened here.
How many years have we been paying on the fire truck? Is it two?
I believe so.
And we got three more years on that and we just added five years on the salt shed, so probably not gonna wanna borrow this.
No. So, at any rate, that's, the next step will be the February 12th for interviewing these four companies and at that point, then they'll have a much better idea of what we're talking about money-wise.
You can let Michelle know what it is because she'll have to put it into the warrant article, so.
Right.
Alright, you have anything else, Jen?
No, sir.
Alright, anybody have any new business?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
I'd like to start off by talking about a very nice lady, resident of town, Mrs. Snyder. As you know, she likes to stand up for what's right and what she believes in and as you also know, she brought this up at town meeting and she did end up having her land surveyed and it did end up being that she was right about what she was saying. And the only downside to the fact, that fact is that I'm the proud owner of four more acres of swell.
[laughing]
Which, which is fine. Apparently owned it all, all along anyway, so.
She must love you.
And, no, she was happy with me.
She did tell you we abated it, right?
No, she's since, she said that you were going to...
We abated it three years back.
We already did, we signed it last week.
We only had to go one year back. We went three years back because of the mistake.
Well, she's on her win the time regimen, so I haven't seen her. She's out of time.
Check is in the mail.
And I wanna go back to town meeting. When she brought up the Flat Ground Road, when they were talking about the money they were getting from the state to work on the roads, the year money, or whatever they call it now.
Yeah.
She was told that that wasn't germane to what we're talking about at town meeting and at that time, the chair in the warrant finding this committee got up and explained to her that was a private road and so the town had no jurisdiction over that road. Well, this is an example of misinformation over time because the Flat Ground Road is a town road. And when this private road stuff started, it was more of a personal agenda by certain people in town to make sure that they didn't do any more work on the Flat Ground Road. And the reason why I say that the Flat Ground Road is a town road is because March 12th, 1960, the town voted to close it. And there was an amendment made at the town meeting that it would be closed subject to bars and gates. And my understanding is what that does is it gives the landowners permission to work on a town road to maintain it so it still be passable because as you know, the general public can't go out and work on a town road.
Right.
The reason why it was closed was because of the bridge on the other end of the Flat Ground Road needed to be repaired and at that time, according to Richard Hamm, who was Sleutman at the time, Wakefield didn't wanna come up with the money and that was 1959. So, 1960, liability purposes, they closed it and hopefully the intention was to get together and get some money so they could put the new bridge in. As people went through public office, it got kinda left by the wayside. When my mother and father moved on to the Flat Ground Road in 1966, the town started maintaining it again. The Sleutman at the time said that it was a town road and people were living on it, you had no choice, just like the Nason Road. We used to close that and the people moved on there, we started maintaining it. Ham's Hill, I remember sliding down that as a kid, uh, they used to go out and plow into Richard Hamm's yard, and turn around and come back out, uh, same thing with Buzzel Road. But as you know, once people move on these town roads, you have to stop maintaining them. There is an easement for the flat ground road, unlike quite a few roads in town that we maintain already. Uh, it's a three-rod easement, uh, the whole length of the road. And that was recorded in eighteen sixty-two. And, um, so the easements on the road, the town owns the road. If the town didn't own the road, they wouldn't have been able to close it, all right? And they took care of it for forty years, and then when the private road stuff, uh, got voted out because of the state's ruling.
Because of the Supreme Court ruling?
Yeah, uh, the flat ground road was on that list, it never should have been on that list. I can't find any documentation where the town owns the road, per se. But as you know, six years ago, uh, there's a whole list of roads that went to town meeting, um, that the road committee couldn't find any documentation of when the town accepted it, and it was a whole list that they wanted the town to accept. And, uh, for whatever reason, you know, that didn't happen. Um, so I guess what I'm asking is, um, I want the town to start taking care of the road. It's a mile and a half to the last house, um, I've been taking care of it ten years, um, I'm getting older, and I, I think that, um, I mean, I would gladly give you any information I got, you can check with MMA or the attorneys, uh, to see whether I'm not a, I'm right or not, I honestly believe I am. And I, I haven't brought this up before, because I didn't want to get into the personal agenda stuff and things like that. And, um, I think it's time, there's quite a few houses on that road now, and, uh, and honestly, it's getting too much for me to, um, maintain, you know, I mean, if, if we had to hire it out, it's a mile and a half long, I mean, that's about six thousand dollars just to maintain in the wintertime. You know, if you put it out to bid, in ten years, that's a lot of money. Uh, so nothing about the gravel and the summer maintenance we do to it. So I would like to know what your thoughts are.
Let me ask you a couple of questions, um, I know we went through this a while back with Hebo-Hibo, because the town had voted to close that one down, and somebody wanted us to open it back up, because they had a lot in there, they wanted to sell, and they couldn't sell it because it wasn't wide enough and all this other stuff. And, and we looked into it, and, and, and we couldn't, and we didn't, but, under the, I mean, it was closed before we did all this new zoning for private roads becoming public roads.
Right.
Is your road capable of, does it have all the requirements of, of the town roads under the new zoning? Is it fifty feet wide, and?
You, you have the fifty-foot easement, Ted.
Yeah, okay.
But as far as the condition of the road, it's no better than most of the other roads that town owns, they're really not very good.
Right, but I mean, it's like the base and stuff like that, when the town was taken care of, they must have done it, right?
Yeah.
And, and there's culverts all through it and everything?
Yeah, I mean, the town might want to put some more in it, but.
Yeah.
Um, and see, this is, this is the thing, when they, when they did the road ordinance, there's certain terminology in the road ordinance that had to be there for clarification, okay? And I don't remember the whole story about the Hebo-Hibo, but if the town abandons a road, or discontinues a road, then the town doesn't own it anymore. If the town closes a road, they still own it.
Okay, so that must have been done at a town meeting, correct?
And, and that.
When they closed it, they must have done it at a town meeting, or what?
March twelfth, like I said, March twelfth, nineteen sixty.
Okay.
I could have told you what article it was, I can't remember.
Okay, well, I have no problem looking into it, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I think it's fine to look into, um, you know, the fact that the town closed it does tend to believe that they could possibly own it.
Well, they couldn't, they couldn't close it if they didn't own it.
A lot of things were done way back, you know.
No, that's true.
Differently, but, yeah, no, I got no issues at all looking into it, um.
Like I said, the easement's there.
Yeah.
That's, that's registered over the, over the York County Commissioner's office.
Easement to the Town of Acton?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's another, another key part, so, yeah, yeah, no, I'm all in favor of looking into it.
Yeah.
Didn't make any promises, but, you know.
No, but I.
You wanted to get in in time to have it on this year's warrant, is what you're after, right?
Uh, I don't, I don't think it needs to go over the vote at the town meeting, I mean, the selectmen have the authority, um, just like, um.
Where the town closed it, the selectmen have the authority to reopen it?
The town did reopen it, by their own, um, by maintaining it for forty years, you know what I mean? That they, I don't remember a town ever voting to reopening a closed road. I, for some reason, I, I believe that, like, when we was closing the Nason Road, you had to do that every year.
That was a winter closing?
You know what I mean, yeah. Um, I don't know, Ted.
Okay.
I don't know, but the, the terminology is very important.
Yeah.
And this is why the terminology was used in the ordinance, because, uh, it was too liberal in the past. And the word closed just meant the town owned it, you know what I mean, they still owned it. And the purpose of the subject to bars and gates was so people could maintain it.
Okay, and, and Hebo-Hibo, we discontinued, we didn't.
I believe we discontinued it.
All right.
And I think that's why, there were several roads, uh, Winchell Orchard Road, that back end of it there, I think we discontinued that one also, a few years back. Uh, it was different roads that were pretty bad off, and, uh, it probably would have been better i-if, uh, when they used to plow the road, they used to just turn around in my mother and father's driveway. Old John Winchell used to, and Roger Lasky, uh, I never could figure that out, because it was an easier place, another hundred feet up the road, but, uh, they only went as far as the house, and, uh, they started working on it in, in the spring of sixty-six, because Victor got stuck down the end of the road turning the bus around. And, uh, so he had some gravel hauled in there, so that he could turn the bus around. Um, but I, I'd appreciate if you guys would just check into it, and, and, uh, I, I I think before it's done and over with, if nothing is done, I think it's gonna probably end up in court, and it's gonna cost people down there money, and cost the town money, and, and the different cases I've heard in, in the state, uh, the town's lost, uh, two cases I know about. So I would just like to get it resolved, and I'm sure you're gonna get some flack, uh, when people hear this, but, um, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, sounds good, thanks, Tess.
But there is one more thing.
Mm-hmm.
Once I'm going back to the beginning, as you know, I like to wonder. When Mrs. Snyder said, no, she doesn't own out there where the water is, I also found out, um, back in eighteen sixty-four, that, uh, Great Falls got permission to flood that and put those dams in. So that's why the property goes out to where the mainstream is.
Oh, okay.
Because that's all.
Because it used to be land.
It used to be land, and there's a road that goes out across that swell on my property, and I never could figure out why would there be a road out there? Well, that was before the river was flooded, so, uh, that's, that's just some really interesting thing, that they got permission to, to flood that whole area.
But, so you know, we, um, because she came in so many times, we taxed that property as low as possible.
Right.
We sent, um, O'Donnell's out there several times, and we taxed it as low as we could, so I think the three years we paid back ended up being, what, twelve dollars a year or something like that?
Twelve dollars total for the three years.
Oh, twelve dollars total for the three years, so I don't think we've increased your tax bill too much.
Well, at my understanding, I, I've heard rumor mill that, uh, the, the feds might buy that off you. So, so I might check into that.
Buy the land?
Yeah, that, all on the river, that, all on the river.
Oh, really?
Yeah, conservation.
Oh.
So maybe I could get before Obama gets out, you know, half a million dollars or something. Thank you.
Well, let us know if they make the offer, so we can raise your tax bill before you get the money.
Thanks, Tess.
All right, anybody else have anything else? No other business, announcements, dog licenses, um, due by the end of the month, correct?
Yes.
All right, if there's nothing else, you have anything?
I do not.
All right, nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?